I'd like to call the order of the 1,481st meeting of the President's Board of Trustees from Majestic Park on the 16th day of September 2019. Please rise for invocation given this evening by trustee Erin Wilson and remain standing for the positive allegiance led by trustee Terry Bailey.
Father, thank you for every seat that's been filled here tonight. For each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room, we thank you. Only you truly know what we're setting out to accomplish this evening. We have an idea, a vision, hints, and daily instructions. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you see in perfect detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Your righteousness transcends all of our efforts and understanding. Forgive us for our pride, the pride that puffs us up, the pride that threatens to unqualify us. Strengthen our confidence in who you have made us to be. Set us free from comparison in order to work together efficiently. Bless this meeting tonight, all those present, as well as the lives of those who we will encounter moving forward. Ready us to make every moment count. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please take a roll?
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Sykes.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kidd.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Clerk is present, the attorney is present.
We have a call. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 3rd board meeting.
So made.
Second. The motion is second. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes have been approved. Next, we'll have the treasurer's report from Treasurer Bradley Robison.
Thank you, Your Honor. The treasurer's report as of September 10th, 2019 reflects the total of all funds to be A copy of the report is available at the back of the room. Also, the annual treasurer's report for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2019, and is available at the back table. And it'll be published in the newspaper. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
So made.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Treasurer's report has been approved. Next, we have communications from Clerk Laurie Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a reminder, September is a five-monthly month, therefore our next meeting will be three weeks away, October 7th. And this evening, we have a couple proclamations. And I do not see a representative here for the Constitution Week, unless I'm wrong. But we're going to read it, and it will be presented to the Daughters of American Revolution. Trustee Bailey will read the proclamation.
Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2019, marks the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 15th through the 21st as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, Steve Johnson, Mayor of the Village of Majesney Park, hereby proclaims September 15th through the September 23rd as Constitution Week in Majesney Park and encourages all citizens to reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves.
Thank you. Also this evening, trustee Kidd will be reading a proclamation being presented by Mayor Johnson to Dr. Michael Bellison and Ellen White and representatives from Vietnam to now for National POW MIA Recognition Day.
Whereas nearly 16,000 former prisoners of war live in the United States having survived some of the most brutal treatment and conditions ever recorded in history of mankind, and whereas we owe a tremendous amount of gratitude to our captured heroes who relied on great strength physically, mentally, and emotionally to endure the extreme hardships at the hands of their captors, yet never yielding the sensitive information demanded of them which could have jeopardized the lives of other soldiers and still fighting in the battlefields. And whereas these brave prisoners endured horrific treatment at the hands of their captors, never knowing if they would ever survive the day, let alone return home and see their loved ones again. And whereas there are still thousands of American soldiers, sailors, airmen, and Marines who remain unaccounted for, and whereas our thoughts and prayers are with the families of these still missing heroes as they pray for the return of their loved ones or for the findings of their remains of those long missing, so that they may be brought to their final and proper resting place here at home. Now, therefore, Steve Johnson, Mayor of the Village of Majesney Park, Illinois, hereby proclaims September 20th as National POW MIA Recognition Day throughout the Village of Majesney Park and encourages all citizens to honor the men and women who endure hardship, as you were, great hardship while imprisoned by our nation's enemies, and to keep their memory alive of those still missing. In witness hereof, I hereunto set my hand and affix the seal of the Village of Majesney Park this 16th day of September 2019.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for what you do for the community. You wanted, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much. I'm Dr. Michael Bellison, Chairman of the Vietnam to Now POW MIA Recognition Day Committee. We have an eight-person committee. Everybody has worked very hard. I heartily thank the Village of Majesney Park Board of Trustees and Mayor Johnson for presenting this proclamation to us. At this time, I will turn things over for a moment to our President of our organization.
Thank you. As he said, I'm the President of Vietnam to Now, and it is an honor and a privilege to be here in front of all of you. And to get this proclamation is something that we can be proud of and something you can be proud of as well. I want to thank all those who are here. I want to thank those especially who are veterans. And I promise you're going to have a great time at the POW MIA ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Next, we have the warrants. Trustee Jake Schmidt.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, I present the warrant in the amount of $975,362.68, and I make a motion for their passage.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please take a roll call?
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Six ayes and no nays.
Bills have been approved. Next on agenda is administrative reports. First of all, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the reappointment of Jay Alms for a five-year term to Planning and Zoning Commission, term ending September 2024.
So made.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Jay Alms is now serving for another five-year term. Thank you, Jay. Next, I would like to share a little information here that I was given from both Tim Savage and James Richter. I'd like to share how diversified the workforce truly is in the Village of Majesney Park. Majesney Park is a home to manufacturers who make a variety of important and enjoyable products, from craft beer to space telescope components. With all these new commercial and industrial growth occurring in Majesney Park, residents in the Rockford region have excellent employment opportunities locally, and we would take a moment to kind of promote some of the cool things that are happening in Majesney Park that are actually made in Majesney Park. Craft beer, pig mines brewing and distributing craft beer and have become a staple in many tap houses, bars, and restaurants from Chicago to Galena. Aeronomics, superior joiner technology is a specialty welding and precision machining operation that has built parts for the Hubble Telescope. Spider Company, who recently has been relocated to Majesney Park, builds high-pressure metal tubing found in jet engines afterburners. Food services, like Little Star Plastics, first created an injectable pump for ice cream machines in the 1990s and since developed parts and components for food preparation and processing machines in every major food chain. Backup power generation, Henning, is manufacturing backup power generators for Microsoft and other technical companies to protect cloud-based information. Steel mills, Quantum Design, has been an industrial leader in producing quality cutting and grinding equipment. Quantum Central Metal Cut Division manufactures large-scale abrasive saws and grinding operations that actually promote steel mills throughout the world. Retail development, numerous retailers have found success in the synergy that exists along the 173 corridor. Many newer retailers have recently joined the corridor, including Hobby Lobby, Route 21, Ultra Beauty, Ross Dress for Less, Old Navy, Dollar Tree, Five Below, Mod Pizza, and many more. I'd like to thank the village for, first of all, for allowing me to attend the Illinois Municipal League Conference this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and looking forward to getting, sharing the information that I received at this conference back to our fellow associates. Next, continuing on with the administrative reports would be Attorney Tom Green.
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next, we have the village administrator, Tim Savage.
Thank you. I'd like to report that the Ad-Hoc Committee for the Study of Police Services met today. They received a draft study from the consulting agency and law firm that's been supporting that effort, and they are forwarding a resolution to the board for consideration, which will be coming up at a board meeting shortly. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next, will be Finance and Human Resource Manager Michelle Johansson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The village entered into a three-year contract with Sikich LLP to conduct an independent annual audit of the financial statements through fiscal year 2020. Sikich has completed their audit covering May 1st, 2018, through April 30th, 2019, and here tonight to present those reports is Nick Vava, Senior Manager with Sikich. You all received a copy of the report, so you can take those out and help.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As Michelle mentioned, my name is Nick Vava. I am an audit manager with Sikich, specifically the audit manager on this village audit. And on behalf of Sikich, I would just like to thank the President and the Board of Trustees for having me here tonight to present the results of the village's audit as of and for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2019. Ultimately, as part of the audit, we issue five separate reports. In terms of those that are following along, the large report in front of you is the annual financial report. We issue the Communication of Deficiencies and Internal Control and Other Comments to Management, the management letter that's required through Illinois Compiled Statutes, the TIF compliance report for the applicable TIF funds here at the village, and that's through Illinois Public Act 85, 1142. And lastly, the annual electronic controllers filing that we assist the village when we're submitting on a year-in, year-out basis. Tonight, I'll briefly highlight some of the items throughout the annual financial report, but be happy to discuss any of the other reports in front of you guys tonight as well. If you're following along, if you could please flip with me to pages 1, 2, and 3 of the audit report, this is what's titled the Independent Auditor's Report. These three pages are really the sole responsibility of us as the auditors. The pages before and after are the responsibility of management here at the village, and that's what the first paragraph really highlights on page 1, is that it is management's responsibility for the preparation and fair presentation of the village's financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The second paragraph, the auditor's responsibility paragraph, shows that it is our responsibility as the auditors to present an opinion on those financial statements based on procedures that are guided through generally accepted auditing standards. So if you follow along with me on to page 2, the top of page 2, under the opinions paragraph, notes that we believe that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the village's governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the village as of April 30th, 2019. This is what is referred to as an unmodified opinion. This is the highest level of assurance that we as auditors can provide to a municipality or a government, and we commend the village on receiving this opinion. We'll be along on to page 3 of the report, the bottom of page 3. And 4 and 5, they're correlated, and I wanted to highlight these because this is a little bit new in terms of what the village is used to seeing in their independent auditor's report. The bottom of page 3 documents the changes that have been required for the village to undergo in relation to the Grant Accountability and Transparency Act, also known as GATA. There are certain compliance requirements that the village had to go through and testing procedures on our end that we had to complete in order to be compliant with GATA. So on page 5, the bottom of page 5, actually the first paragraph, the last sentence, just notes that the results of our tests disclose that there were no instances of noncompliance in relation to these procedures that we did have to perform. I just wanted to highlight that because this is new in comparison to 2018. Moving along, just a couple pages ahead, you'll find MDNA Page 1, which is titled the Management's Discussion and Analysis. This document is prepared by Michelle here in the Finance Department, reviewed by Administrator Savage, and is also looked at by us as the auditors to ensure that the numbers are reliable and consistent amongst the financial statements and that they're compliant with generally accepted accounting principles. If I were to recommend anything to be read throughout this annual financial report, it would be to look at these 12 pages. They're very well-prepared. Michelle does a great job of really describing what's transpired during 2019, as well as what's changed in comparison from 2018 to 2019. Moving along, just a handful of pages ahead, we're going to flip to the government-wide financial statements on pages 6, 7, and 8. Pages 6 and 7 represent the statement of net position. Page 8 represents the statement of activities. These are the government-wide, the full government-wide balance sheet and income statements for the village as of April 30th, 2019. What's unique about these statements as it relates to the other statements throughout the report is that they are recorded under the full accrual basis of accounting, also known as the Economic Resources Measurement focus, so they include the likes of all the long-term activity here at the village, such as capital assets, long-term debt, the outstanding bonds that are issued, notes payable, also the net pension liability for the IMRF plan that the village has to report. Moving along to page 8, I just wanted to highlight the overall change in net position, which is at the bottom of page 8, you'll see that there's a positive change in net position of about $5.4 million. That's a representation of the overall performance of the governmental funds, as well as capital assets that were acquired, contributed assets that were acquired, really just reflecting that overall positive change of $5.4 million, ending with your total net position, long-term net position as of April 30th, for just above $91 million. The next four or five pages represent the governmental funds, the balance sheet and the income statement. Pages 9 and 10 are the balance sheet, and I'll move past those, and I'd like to just direct your attention to pages 12 and 13, which is the governmental funds income statement for the village. These statements differ from the three pages I just covered in that they are recorded under the current Resources Measurement focus, so it's more of a cash basis kind of year-out approach. It doesn't include any of those capital assets, long-term liabilities, things of that nature. So really, I'd just like to point out that the bottom of page 13 shows a overall positive change in fund balance for governmental funds of about $2.7 million, for an ending total fund balance for the village's governmental funds of $16.6 million. This just kind of shows and represents the overall, you know, fiscal management and fiscal responsibility that the Finance Department and management has done here on a consistent basis. A few more pages that I would like to cover, I apologize, I know that this isn't, you know, there's a lot that is made up in an audit report, but if you could direct your attention to page 46. Page 46 represents the village's participation in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. About four fiscal years ago, the village was required to report the net pension liability specific to IMRF on the face of the financial statements. The bottom of page 46, under the 2018 column, just shows that the actuarially determined net pension liability is just shy of $860,000. This is measured on a calendar year-end basis, so the most recent information available is as of December 31st, 2018. Overall, the funded status for the village is right around 80%. If you look at the performance over the last four years, 87% to 85 to 93, it's a very healthy funded status in comparison to other municipalities. It's right where you want to be. These numbers do change as actuarial assumptions and realities change on a year-in, year-out basis. I'd just like to highlight that these are subject to fluctuation. So the last page I would like to cover is the actual last page of the report, page 74, and that relates to what I was discussing in terms of the new compliance requirements related to the Grant Accountability and Transparency Act. The consolidated year-end financial report is required to be disclosed by the village and submitted to GATA. This information just documents all of the grant programs in which federal, state, and other grant expenditures were paid during the year. This information is prepared by Michelle, reviewed by us as the auditors, to ensure that it's consistent with what was tested and the total expenditures agrees to the statement of activities on the government-wide level. Overall, that concludes my presentation of the annual financial report. I would just like to extend my thanks and gratitude towards Michelle in the Finance Office. She's a pleasure to work with, and she's extremely prepared throughout this process. It's a thorough process that we do on our end, and she's very appreciative of that start to finish, and I just want to extend my thanks to Michelle. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that there are tonight, and thanks for having me. Yes.
So you're the person I talked to on the phone?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you for our conversation, and I appreciate it.
Of course, of course.
Anyone else? Hearing none? Nicola, I want to thank you for all of your hard work on this. Very, very well done. Thank you, Michelle, and Tim, for your input on that. Okay, at this point.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the fiscal year 2018, 2019 audit report and place this on file.
So made.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Do you want to do a roll call? Okay, will we voice, vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and this will be placed on file. Okay, continuing onward, Community Development Director, James Richter.
No report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Superintendent Public Works, Chad Hunter.
No report today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Village Engineer, Chris Dopkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. Quick report on projects going on throughout the village. Public Works Building, the shops for the building are nearly approved. The building is actually set to arrive right around the week of October 18th. Site work has been ongoing, and footing work should start next week. On the resurfacing, all of our paving is complete. The contractor still needs to finish some shouldering, restoration, a number of punchless items throughout the village, but otherwise that project will wind up. Stonehead Storm Saw, the storm saw project is ongoing. The contractor's putting in the first run going down Elm Avenue, which is going to generate the most of the inconveniences for the project because a lot of that work is taking place between the curbs. Most of the remainder of the storm saw is going to be located behind the curb, and will have a few street crossings, but for the most part will be out of everybody's way. The first of two planned water main shutdowns was going to occur tomorrow. We have the lower main at the northwest corner of Elm and Bunting. Next week, we'll be lowering a main at the southeast corner of the same intersection. North Park Public Water District has provided notices to affected residents, and thank you for the district for working with us in the project. Once the water main is lowered, Storm Saw will continue down Bunting towards Colchester and then turn south on Colchester, and then next week, it's going to continue down Elm towards Ashtown. Mildred Road, our resident meeting is set for this Wednesday. The contractor will begin work next Monday. Contractor plans to do Heron Drive first, get the Storm Saw in, do the core out on Heron, and then to fill in the other Storm Saw areas along Mildred, and then do the PCC fixes. That's all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next will be Public Safety Supervisor, Sergeant Tammy Stanley.
No reports, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next will be Committee and Trustee Reports. Does any trustee have a report this evening? Trustee Kidd?
I would like to thank Officer Stanley, Sergeant Stanley. I have received approximately 15 phone calls about Officer Mary doing a great job on Men's Road, and Mr. Jackson, Lauren, Luger, Kat, Eggers, Bruce, and his clan of neighbors. I can't tell you how happy they are of him, and I'm just letting you know, they encourage you guys to patrol Men's Drive like you have been, and thank you again, because normally I receive a lot of complaints. So I'm just letting you know, all these people have called me, so thank you.
Good news.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, the Administration and Finance Committee met, and we had two resolutions, one that's on tonight's agenda and one going to the October 7th board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Beck?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, the Public Improvement Safety Committee met and approved two driveway variances, one residential and one commercial, which will move to the October 7th.
Thank you. Does anybody else have a report? Seeing none. Next would be Consent Agenda. Would the staff present all items to be considered on their consent agenda?
Thank you. I'd like to move Item C, Resolution 66R19, under, to New Business. So the consent agenda will consist of Item A, Ordinance 4019, amending the Village Code of the Village of Majestic Park to impose a municipal cannabis retailer's occupation tax. Final reading. Item B, Resolution 61R19, approval of the group health insurance coverage contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Are there any items a trustee would like removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately? Seeing none, or hearing none, the consent agenda has been accepted as presented, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So made.
Got a motion and a second. Will the clerk please take a roll call?
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
Consent agenda has been approved. Next would be unfinished business, having none. Next would be new business. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 66R19, Accept Public Improvements and Release Letter of Credit for Erickson Commercial Subdivision Platte Number 3.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. May I have staff report, please?
Thank you. The village engineer is recommending acceptance of the public improvements and release of the letter of credit. However, we do, we would like to add a condition to the motion that the approval is subject to final acceptance of the improvements by the village engineer. If I might ask, if I might, between, in the first line, between the words accepts and the, we put a comma, sorry Laurie for the surprise, we put a comma after the word accepts, insert subject to the village engineer accepting all infrastructure improvements, comma. I have it written down, I can give it to you.
Okay, thank you.
So we would need a motion to amend the main motion to add that language.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to amend.
So made.
Second.
Motion second, so.
And then we would need a vote on the motion to amend.
Amendment, okay. So we'll make a voice, or do you want to do a roll call?
Roll call.
And to amend, amendment, got a motion?
We have a motion.
We have a motion and a second, just roll call.
Okay.
So trustee Sykes.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Kidd.
Present.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson. Sykes.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, one present.
Motion's been approved.
That's the amendment.
Further amendment?
Now on the main motion as amended.
Okay, now we need, as motion as amended, we need just a voice call.
Either further discussion or the roll call.
Okay, okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Smith.
Aye.
Kidd.
Present.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, one present.
Motion's been approved. Next would be public comment, would anybody like to address the board for the good of the village? Seeing no one, next would be adjournment, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Second.
A motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.